All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started. I'll call the meeting in order and Commissioner Johnson is gonna do the prayer and Commissioner Alderson is gonna do the pledge. So if everybody'd stand, please.
I believe that we are the people of the United States of America and the United Republic, with this chance, one nation under God, within the Lord, with the very deep intention of the Father.
That's prime.
Almighty God, we just thank you for the opportunity to come here today to discuss the city of Mount Pleasant and make decisions for the benefit of the citizens of this town. We pray that you would help us to be wise in our decisions and, um, kind to each other as we listen and question and talk. Thank you for each person who's here, especially for our first responders, for all that they do, and our city staff. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank y'all, ladies. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
All right, all present, got a couple of sets of minutes, a study session from August the 15th, and a regular session from August the 20th, which is in your packet. Once you've had an opportunity to review, I'll be happy to entertain a motion.
Well, I do have, uh, one comment, and it's on our, I guess, memorandum of understanding, okay, uh, when I made that, I guess, discussion, and that's all it says in the, in the minutes is "discussion." And when I offered, or I didn't make it an offer, I just put that out there, it's $60,000. And, uh, so someone, I didn't, I guess, I might have should have played coach or teaching, but I didn't. But someone brought it to my attention, and I just wanted to make it clear that, I guess, when it said, when I said the $62,000, and it was said, well, this memorandum of understanding is a lot less than that. And it wasn't. It's about $61,800. And then if you add the next month to it, you could put about another $4,000 on it. And either one of them, it's not no big deal. But I just want the citizens to know that what I said, you know, wasn't a lot, a lot more than what they offered her.
All right. Mike Evans made his comments, entertain a motion that we approve our statements.
Make a motion that we approve the study session from August the 15th and the regular session from August the 20th.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Awards, presentation, and appointments. We have a great evening here, we got a bunch of the staff here with the young man swearing in of our new police officer, Matthew Press. Got it? Matthew, if you would, please come forward with Michael. We're awfully proud to have you.
I, Matthew Press.
I, Matthew Press.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution.
To uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Tennessee.
State of Tennessee.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
And charter.
And charter.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
My duties in accordance.
My duties in accordance.
With the general orders.
With the general orders.
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Matthew, thank you again.
Thank you.
Very, very much, Matthew. We'll give Cory a chance to have a seat.
Did you find the back panel rocky with your part?
All right, uh, next we have Mount Pleasant Beer Board, and, uh, Michael Hay has made a recommendation that we add Jay Smith, correct? And, um, Jay is longtime resident here and a, uh, property owner as well as a business owner, so, uh, fits the bill very well. Any questions or comments? Entertain a motion for Jay.
Mayor, I'm looking for motion for Jay Smith to be on the Mount Pleasant Beer Board.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Mount Pleasant Housing Authority, we have three letters of recommendation. Um, first is, uh, respectfully request to add an item to the agenda in Mount Pleasant, uh, to add back for another term is Lance Boyd, and he would serve for the next five years, and Lance has been on there for a number of years already and does a great job for us. Next would be Rodney Massey, uh, which he's already been there, and this would run through October of '29 as well. And the new member would be, uh, Ms. Linda Fitzgerald asked, had asked to resign, and the board has asked that we add Ms. Carolyn Bennett for the, uh, place that's left, and Ms. Bennett is also a resident, and it's a requirement by the bylaws that we have a resident be a member, so, um, if anybody's not against it, I would, or any questions, I'd recommend we approve all three at once.
Hers is five years.
That's correct.
I make a motion, we approve the three candidates for the housing authority.
Got a motion, and we have a second.
Okay.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Mount Pleasant Recreation Committee, Ms. Anna Arnold, she's a, uh, local resident here, of course, uh, isn't she a school?
Teacher.
School teacher with a couple of kids?
Yeah.
So she's got a real interest.
Mm-hmm.
A real interest, so, uh, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we add Anna Arnold to the Mount Pleasant Recreation Commission Board.
Got a motion, we have a second. Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Completion or review of any unfinished business? Hearing none? Monthly report from Mater. Uh, I have got, and I missed one on here. Mr. Granberry pointed it out to me, and it's the biggest one, I don't know how I missed it, but, uh, upcoming events, I said I was gonna do this at the last meeting, September the 28th and 29th, we have a home tour, there's 15 homes in, uh, the post office and other places that are gonna do that, and all of the proceeds from that go to Main Street, which is our visit Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, and from what I'm hearing, they are having one heck of a purchase of the tickets already. So that's going to be nice to see. Uh, it's been, I guess we did that last Christmas, maybe was the last time we did it? Uh, and on the 28th of that night as well, there's Music on the Porch Series at seven o'clock, um, there'll be food trucks on site, and, uh, what's pretty cool is Boxer Rock is entertainment, and they started right here, across the street, so that's, that's pretty neat. October the 13th, we're gonna have our bicentennial celebration, and it will be at Manor Hall, since we got downtown kind of, uh, torn apart, there's gonna be a band, uh, we're gonna have it that afternoon, and I think it starts at two or three.
Three to five, I think.
Three to five, okay. Uh, so that'll be, everybody that can, please try to attend, we're gonna have quite a few folks there. Uh, we've requested the governor, and I think he's confirmed that he will be here. November the 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we're gonna have the Polar Express that will be held at the library, um, which is gonna be nice. November the 30th, we're gonna have it six o'clock Christmas at the library, and the Kids Zone is gonna start at four o'clock, music will go to eight, there's gonna be food trucks, uh, across the street, and, uh, there's Dance Studio of the Children that's located right down here, that Cedric's wife owns, is gonna be part of the entertainment as well as elementary school choir. That's gonna be nice to see. December the 9th, at six o'clock, is, uh, our Christmas parade, and it'll start on Tiger Trail. So, uh, we're gonna have to have a little bit of a modified route due to downtown, so, uh, we'll get that published as quickly as we can, but we've kind of mapped it out, and it looks like it's still gonna be able to go down Main Street to some portion, and then circle its way back around, so, uh, just for everybody's information, uh, if you got any questions on that, uh, you can go to visit Mount Pleasant, uh, website or Facebook, I think it actually is, and they've got all of it listed there.
Um, there's also gonna be a presentation of colors, a full bag type presentation before Music on the Porch.
Yes.
Starts at 6:15 at Jerry Sands' house.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll see, that's it.
Yep.
We're also having a pancake breakfast for the kids, again, with Santa Claus, uh, before the parade.
Okay. Monthly financial and budget report, Ms. Shepherd.
I emailed the financials, um, we closed the books for, uh, the previous fiscal year, last day of August, I waited till, you know, tried to get everything in from the state that we needed as far as our revenues go, um, and then closed the books. Audit is gonna be here on site for the first day tomorrow, we've actually been working with them remotely pretty much since August, beginning of August, uh, but they're physically gonna be here tomorrow in person. The June financial that I sent you all, the profit and loss statement, I put notes in there for all the commissioners to see. Um, the goal of those notes were for y'all to, like, actually get, like, the bottom line where we kind of ended, of course, we'll get audit adjustments that may adjust some of those numbers, we won't see that till maybe December or January, but you all have a good idea where we stand. We had discussed reviewing our gas rates, and I know we had, I had emailed that about six or seven months ago to y'all, because I had already had concerns about the gas fund. Gas does not have, gas and sanitation do not have the same oversight board like water and sewer does. So water and sewer, of course, you know, we have a lot stricter regulations from the state that we have to follow on our regulatory balances. Gas closed with a deficit last year too, um, this year it may be a little bit more of a deficit, so we are working with, um, we're starting discussions with engineers and MTS to try to see, um, that way we can increase, the minimum increase that we can do to help our, uh, funds come back into, uh, the regulatory balance like we need it. But as of right now, that fund has closed in a deficit last year, and I am, it closed for me as a deficit, and I have a feeling even after the audit adjustments, it'll stay in a deficit. The rest of our funds did good, if there is a deficit on any of the funds, it's because we're using fund balance for capital projects, or it was, uh, prior fund balances that we needed to use up to close the fund, but I left notes in every one of those, so keep, I would keep those notes, and, um, that is something that I will probably bring back again when audit comes around. I like to compare where I thought we ended up and how many adjustments they gave us to see, that helps us improve every year. Um, property, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, I, I'll ask you.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say on the gas, since, you know, we mentioned gas, and, and I guess we have still at some point in time on that valve to replace or whatever.
The gate, main gate.
Yeah.
We actually applied for that grant last year, and we were turned down, so I think when the application comes open again, because that was a grant that we had looked into this past year for the gas gate.
But I'm just saying, if, if we were forced, you know, to put that gate valve in, it would take our, our funds.
It would take whatever we have in the fund balance, I would say, probably, yeah, because the cost of the gas was quite, the gate was pretty expensive.
I spoke with Travis Groth today, and, uh, he's gonna give us an invitation, there's going to be some folks here in a couple of weeks on Friday to discuss that grant, to try to help us make sure we get it. They're actually coming to us.
Okay.
May I add to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so with that in the background going on, to answer your question too, uh, meeting with Ricky and Zach with Symmetry, um, looking internally through our distribution system, where are some capital projects, because there's been a lot of requests for additional gas on the industry side and residential, so looking at that, maybe we can tie those together somehow.
Absolutely.
Um, property taxes, we received our files from the state of Tennessee this week, actually, um, and so, uh, if you were to go online, you may be able to see them now, I need to go and check, I may be speaking too soon, because we just uploaded the file before the meeting, so everybody's, uh, the state has sent everything in, you should be receiving your bills for that from the state. Now, we are, all of our property tax bills go directly from the state of Tennessee, they process everything, they get all the files, we get our stuff from them, so you all will receive your bills in October. If you don't receive a bill in October, by the end of October, reach out to us and we can print you something up here, we get a copy of everything here from the state as well. Um, that is in the system, and then we, I emailed all the commissioners a copy of our new bills, so the utility bills are changing. The main reason for the change has been the postcards are expensive to buy, because nobody really uses postcards anymore, to get the pre-perforated, pre-tinted paper, it's expensive, and the amount of bills that get lost in the mail, I think all of us at some point have experienced not receiving a bill, and just because we remember that our bill is due on the 15th, we've been able to pay it on time. Um, I've had people who have come in and said, I never received the bill, so I didn't even, you know, if you don't keep up with your due date, that's happened. So the goal is to move to, and the, the last thing, I forgot, um, confidentiality, that has been something that hasn't been, years ago, the state did ask governments to go away from mailing postcards, because people's names and addresses and usage and everything, their utility information is all printed on the postcards, if the postcard goes to the wrong person, we just gave away somebody's information as well. While it hasn't been a major issue, the state discourages it, so, again, another thing is confidentiality, these will be sealed envelopes, I emailed you all a sample of the bill, um, we will be processing all the billing in-house, we are just using a third party to process that file for us and mail it for us. The advantages to that for us have been, of course, we're not printing anything, we're not buying any more equipment, we're not buying any more ink to print any of those bills every month, we're not buying the card stock, the labor cost of the girls up front having to do all of that, um, and then, because we're doing mass mailings through a company that already does it, our postage is the same that we was paying for that postcard, it will be the same postage amount that we were pretty much paying for a letter-size envelope to go out versus a postcard to go out. So there's been, there is gonna be a little bit of a cost increase, but there was a lot of questions that people that had asked on social media, but overall cost, what it costed us to process 12 months of bill versus this, is maybe another thousand dollars extra a year. Yes, sir.
The email is still an option too, right?
Oh, yes, yes, the e-bill is still an option, we encourage everybody to have e-bill, because there is no chances of you not getting a bill, um, the bills are always due on the 15th of the month, if you don't, for some reason, get it, postage is still an issue sometimes, you know, so.
Everybody, not sometimes.
So e-bill is still an option, and then these bills will have a QR code, the sample bill, the QR code is only taking you to the website, but the QR code that we've designed to go on the actual bill will take you directly to Citizen Portal, and you just have to enter your account information, you can pay it. We're eventually, I have talked to local government, because that's been another question that's been asked, is are the online payments ever gonna be free? Um, the only way the online payments would be free if the city decided at some point to eat the cost of the processing that the vendor charges us. Currently, that cost goes back to the person paying the bill, if we were ever to decide that, but that's a decision we would have to make at a later date and see how much, because it's really hard to determine what that cost is, depending on how many online payments we get. But I have discussed that with our, um, payment providers, the online website people, and they said, unless you guys want to pay for it through the city, that's the only way to mitigate that cost at the moment. Um, that is everything I have for today, if you all have any questions for me.
If you do want to communicate, you can put stuff on, we can add to.
Correct, yeah.
A lot of.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even mention that, on the back of the bill is the whole schedule of late fees, penalties, you know, cutoff fees, but it also has a schedule of holidays on when the city hall is closed, when trash will not be picked up, so we're printing that on the back of the bill, and it gives us a, the gap in between the perforated area in the top, the blank area in the middle, maybe I should have had Michael pull it up on the screen, but, um, it'll allow us to put messages, so our water report, the water quality reports, property tax information, fire information, that needs to be communicated with the citizens, and because we're using this company, we can actually add flyers to our billing as well, so every month, if there is other departments in the city that want to become part of our utility billing, we can actually communicate with the citizens through that mailing as well. That's another plus.
Thank you, I requested this two years ago, when I went to MTS class, so thank you for bringing it forward.
That's what I had heard that in one of my classes, that they want you to get away from postcard as much as you can.
Because it was a violation of privacy.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Shepherd? Hearing none? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve the financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a couple of them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. By the way, the audit was excellent last year. Our debt service coverage ratio was three times over, and in the real world, you try to operate at 1.25, so, uh, it was excellent. Also, right quick, we got Mike here, and he's gonna be up here in a minute, but, uh, thank you for your oversight and the whole board's oversight of the power system, it operates exceptionally efficiently. So thank y'all. Monthly report from city manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, um, you know, we've been concentrating on our unaccounted water loss, so I'm gonna go through a couple of stats that Dale sent me today, and I'll try to tie it all together in the end. Um, so you, the leak surveys, 80 leaks found, um, 32 leaks have been repaired, 48 leaks are left to repair, 17 of those leaks are on fire hydrants, and we're getting close to repair those. It's estimated at the total 80 leaks, that's 267 gallons per minute. What Dale is saying, and it's pretty accurate, and I'll tie it together in just a second, feel like we've repaired 180 gallons per minute since July 1, I'm doing these leak surveys. You all, you guys know, if you've been in my office, just come in there, you can see the telemetry, the tanks, and watch them flows by the minute. So back a last few months ago, we were on average, 1.3 million gallons a day finished water. We're almost at a million gallons per day right now. So that math adds up, because that's 259,000 gallons per day in leaks fixed so far, so that math is pretty accurate, so, uh, just wanted to let you guys know that that's an ongoing thing, and it's working for us, so.
Playing for it, sir.
I think so.
In a big way.
Um, one other thing, just so you know, we're in the background of working, uh, we talked about it, study session, Ms. Shepherd are just forecasting revenues next year, some of the industry, the pilots and tilts are coming off and looking at, uh, the mission you guys wanted to put out front, is have a street maintenance program planned, and hopefully July 1, allocation of budget, and we're hitting the ground running, bidding those out.
Cool.
Right.
Didn't know that.
Anything else, Phil?
I got two more things.
All right.
Sorry. Uh, Arrow Mines, and I've been talking about every month, I hope to have something in front of Parks and Recs next month on construction plans, contractual design, and the last thing I have, um, this may, since Kate's last, last official meeting, so we have planned October 4th, um, 101 Halon, to have our session, 11 to 4, to, uh, figure off to retirement, but I'll, I'll send out another date, make it so close, and to make sure.
Good.
And we came up with a date, put a dedication of a show to.
You know, ma'am.
We're still working on the plaques, we're working on the plaques, and we have an estimate on the sign, and, um, he's sending back a picture of, um, the design, he sent us one, and he's sending it back, uh, when we asked him to make changes.
Can we try to do it before it gets cold, please?
The goal is October, but, uh, we have to have that plaque, there's gonna be a sign.
I know.
And then a plaque, and the plaque will take, the plaque will take longer than the sign, but the goal is to try and do it in October.
Thank you.
All right, special reports from other departments, wastewater liaison report from Bars Design.
I'll hit the highlight, it's in your packet, so Rainy Street has been closed out, so that, it's been closed, wastewater treatment plan improvements, uh, significant progress on electrical gear installation, completed modifications that the lagoon headworks and pump station, um, and began re-alignment on existing aviation basins.
Okay. Anything else on it?
Yes, sir.
Mount Pleasant gas?
Yes, in your packet, and we talked about it in the study session, there is, uh, three agreements, uh, every five years, they need to be updated, and basically, the way I understand it, that's, um, a grandfather falls in his delivery of our natural gas from East Tennessee. What I understand is we don't, um, agree to those, that, uh, everything changes, and it may be way more expensive if we don't agree to those current conditions.
This has been a supplier for years.
Yeah, the motion has to be made for coming.
Yeah.
Would you rather it?
Yeah, I would rather it be a motion.
Okay.
So if we agree to it, then every time it's gonna say the same.
Yep.
Okay.
Entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we pass the, uh, gas system agreement as presented.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. New business ordinance 2024-1126, again, this is ordinance, and this is the first reading. An ordinance to require 911 locators be installed at new residential construction with new residential addresses. Cory?
Um, the purpose of this ordinance is to require the not, the locator 911 be installed at new residential construction with new residential addresses, like the caption says. The locator 911 is a smart LED light bulb that is used to replace the existing front porch light bulb, uh, or light that's most visible from the road. When 911 is called, uh, the bulb converts into a strobing beacon that changes color from red to blue to white, and identifies the exact location that 911 was called from. Um, Dr. Tyler gave a presentation at the study session, and I think he's here today to answer questions, but the purpose of this ordinance is to add this as a requirement. Um, so if the city believes that this is necessary to enhance the safety of its citizens, then you, as the commissioners, can require the installation of the locator 911 using the police power given to you under your charter. Um, the ordinance would update Title VII of the municipal code, which is the fire section, safety and fire.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
Okay, so, Cory, so you're saying, because that was the question I was gonna have tonight, so you're saying this would be part of fire and safety code, because that, that was my concern, and you know, I'm more for it because of the, that, I know how long it takes, and I want to get that sometimes, but, uh, if it wasn't part of the building code, that's the reason why I had a question, is that gonna come against you?
So what we did is we, the city has adopted the International Building Code, International Fire Code, sections of it.
Okay.
And instead of going through and trying to add this to each of those, I added a separate section in our municipal code, under our Section VII, which is fire and safety.
Okay.
That just, it's a very short, uh, ordinance that just says, any new residential construction that this 911, our locator 911, has to be installed there. So it, instead of trying to incorporate it, because I think it would have to go into building and fire and several different ones, I just put it as a standalone ordinance.
Okay, as long as it's in with the codes, and it's gonna be legal, let's see, I'll look at it.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment, and I guess a question too. Um, I, I appreciate the product immensely, and I think it's a wonderful thing, and I think it's something that should be encouraged for folks, um, to have. I just don't feel it's fair to mandate that every single home that's built, or apartment or townhouse, has to have something like that. Um, if I was building a house and wanted gas lights, you know, or front porch lights or things like that, um, I wouldn't want to be forced to have to have something like that, and, um, we put a lot, we already have a lot of things we've put on new construction, um, I just feel like it's a lot, and I also am concerned about the fact that, and again, I appreciate everything you guys have done in creating this, that because it's a private company that's part of this area, that there couldn't be some lawsuits about forcing us to do something with a company that, you know what I mean, is a local, and you can only get it from one place, so I just, for those two reasons, I just, I don't think it's something I feel comfortable mandating people do, and also, I just don't feel comfortable with the liability of it.
Cory, can you answer anything on the liability side?
Um, I think that the city can make decisions based off the safety of its citizens, so when you are making this choice, you need to be making the choice.
Sure.
Based exclusively on, we think this would enhance, this is necessary to enhance the safety of our citizens, and take out the consideration that this would benefit a company that's local. So I get that, it's very, it's, it's hard to separate it in your mind, but when you're making decisions, you're making decisions based off of what's best for the citizen, so you have to make that call based on that analysis, not how this will impact anybody individually.
Good point. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
This could save a lot of people's lives, it really could. And if nobody else, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Mike, anything y'all would like to add, since you are here?
Any questions, please, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mike?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion in favor of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash eleven-twenty-six. The main reason is because of the safety for our city and for our citizens. So I'd like to make that motion.
Got a motion?
As presented, you know.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnston?
No.
Four one, thank you. Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash eleven-twenty-seven, an ordinance accepting a portion of Magnolia Drive as a city street. Cory?
The Brightland Homes, the developer of cottages of Bearwood, has purchased property between Magnolia Drive and Cannon Road. And during their, the purchase of this property, it was discovered that Magnolia Drive is included in the legal description of the property that, uh, Brightland Homes purchased. They did not want to own this road and the city believes that we built this road and we have maintained it and policed it since the nineteen-eighty, its construction in nineteen-eighty-nine, as far as we can tell. So the purpose of this ordinance is to formally accept ownership and maintenance of a portion of Magnolia Drive that crosses the Brightland Homes property. Um, it, it consists of approximately seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-thirty-five square feet and it's running in a southwesterly direction from Cannon Road. if this is something that moves forward, there would be a, a legal description, a survey and a legal description of the property that the city would be officially taking ownership and maintenance of. Um, that's not an expense that we've asked anybody to incur at this point. But if it moves forward, there will be indeed an actual description of what you would be taking.
Any questions for Cory? We discussed this Thursday night and we have maintained this road and basically owned it since nineteen-eighty-six, I think.
We found where we bid out the, to pay it and?
Eighty-nine, eleven hundred, uh, linear feet, and I think maybe need to change it to linear feet. That's where.
Okay.
Maybe, when we're looking at, it's another reading coming. But and then in ninety-two, we, uh, we found records of where it was bid out and awarded to a company and that's all we could find.
Okay. So the long and the short of it is, we've owned this road for a lot of years anyway and just didn't realize it.
Well, it is a, like you say, it is a, regardless whether we want it to be, it is a city street.
It's a city street whether we want it or not. So any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash eleven-twenty-seven.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Yep.
Got a number of seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash eleven-twenty-eight, an ordinance amending Title Fourteen of the Zoning and Land Use Control, uh, being the same zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning a property from highway commercial to light industrial, and we discussed this as well, Cory?
Um, the purpose of this ordinance is to rezone approximately sixteen-point-three acres on North Main Street from highway commercial to light industrial. The planning commission held a public hearing, uh, on this proposed rezone and then made a recommendation to this commission to rezone it from, um, highway commercial to light industrial. The planning commission found that this location would support the zoning of light industrial because it was in an industrial area and that it would have, it would not have adverse effect on adjoining landowners. Um, the planning commission passed a resolution that includes their specific findings of fact and that resolution and their specific findings, which are on a worksheet, are included in your packet and are included as a exhibit to this document.
Any comments or questions?
I'm the plan I got, like, I don't, you know, it was just what you said and everything to go with it.
Yep.
As far as I, I am, you know.
Yeah, so what Mr. Davis is pointing out, there's a, there's a blank section in your ordinance as well. So y'all have the same requirement that you make a decision based off of those four factors. There's blanks in the ordinance that you can, we can go ahead and fill them in now or we can do that the second reading after the public hearings, but y'all have to make findings as well.
And how close is this located to the daycare?
Hmm, it's pretty good ways.
Yeah, it's a different area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I seen water mouth.
Yeah.
Please, Michael, technically.
There won't be no, no more traffic now than it, than it is now.
No, I thought, I thought that it was the planning commission, it's just, I think we're moving to a different location.
That's all they do.
It's a new license.
Yeah, same, same businesses. Any other comments or questions?
Are you saying we have to fill this out or we just, uh, or we just do what we've been doing in the past? You know, like number one, amendment requested zoning and the land use is in agreement.
Right, you can say that and then we'll type it in and fill it out based off of what you say. I just didn't want to put words in your, in your mouth.
I understand, I understand, because there, I guess there's several industrial places really, you know, so. So on, on that, I will say on, on the number one of our zoning ordinance in Mount Pleasant, our findings, the, the amendment requested zoning is in agreement with the land use plan of the area and it's because of what's already out there.
That's basically what the planning commission said too.
Yes, yeah. Almost of the verbatim.
Yeah. Is there a blank one in here?
Yeah.
Did you think there was a blank one in here?
No.
Oh, okay, you just gave us the ones that we used the other night.
This right here.
Go on that.
I didn't give y'all a worksheet, you can have one if you want.
No, no. She's already had one.
But is that one enough or do we have to do them all?
I would prefer that you did them all, but it's, when you're making this, when you're making a determination, you have to find findings of fact for each one of those things. Um, so they don't have to be included in a motion, but they can be, I think that this is, like I said, in the area of industrial already.
Well, I'll do notice, there will be no adverse effect upon a jointed property owners unless such can be justified by the overall women, public good or welfare. But what I can, I guess, say from this right here, I mean, for, while the net's trucking is gravel, this right here would even be a lot better because it will be some kind of payment there, so. So that, that's a big plus.
But it's also closer to them apartments.
Well.
Go ahead, read.
Is that enough, Cory?
On, on number three, no property owner or small group of property owners will benefit materially from the change of the tur, the term of the general public.
Agree.
And I agree. And number four, conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment that the area's land use plan is subsequently the zoning map.
So what the planning commission said is, is that they felt like this area could support either one. And that's kind of the way they split that one, they said that they felt like it was, it didn't change, but it could have supported either choice from the beginning.
I mean, you have to also consider right across the street, you have heavy industrial.
Correct.
Right across the street.
All right, we've touched the four, any other comments or questions from the commission? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one-one-two-eight as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
With the comment?
With the comments of Mr. Davis.
Okay.
My second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries, resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-eight, a resolution in authorizing the issuing of general obligation bonds by the city of Mount Pleasant and the Park Mount not to exceed four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand to purchase a back truck, shipper?
We did a resolution, we did a resolution last year and the last fiscal year to go ahead and order the back truck. We could not, the back truck was gonna take almost eight to ten months to produce, so we did the resolution, I believe. I'd like to say November, December, January, somewhere around the winter months to order this, um, back truck. The back truck was delivered last month. Um, I think we communicated pictures and stuff through emails to the commissioners. It has been in use, I think they're using it every day. Um, it is saving a lot of time and I'm just speaking from what I know, I'm not a utility public works person, but from what I can see from the guys, you know, they can use the, um, jet, uh, part of it, which is, I don't know what PSIs it is, do you know?
No, they're digging holes with water.
They're, yeah, they're.
That's right.
Digging hole with very, um, powerful water jet.
Dale, anything?
They have a vacuum.
They're dull.
Would you like to add anything to it? We talked about this briefly. In big brief places.
This is the borrowing resolutions to go ahead and do the closing for it. Um, it'll be twenty days before we can do the closing, but.
That's all we did pay for it.
Almost.
Almost.
Mayor, commissioners, uh, just real quick, this, this machine has, in some circumstances, increased, um, time digging by three-hundred percent. So it's reducing how much we're digging, we're taking, uh, three-hour jobs down to one hour and sometimes even better. Another thing that we're seeing is it's, uh, the actual work and the labor that's involved is less intensive, so you've got less risk of strains, breaks, et cetera, et cetera, so. The benefits of this truck all around are going to pay off in the long run. I think the truck over time will.
Yeah.
Short time if we keep that up.
Well, it's, e- every single day it's a benefit, uh, not only to the workers but to the community as well because we're producing more work more efficiently.
Yeah, one thing to add, my knowledge of it is about like shippers on the back truck, but I heard one employee say my back doesn't hurt anymore.
They do, they do.
I went by, I went by and watched them work out there right in front of, uh, McNees Apartments out there and they had a hole in the ground, I, you couldn't even see the bottom of it. It was unbelievable. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion. Shipper, you can keep yours.
Mayor, I'm, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I go ahead, I make a, a motion to accept resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-eight as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-nine, and shipper, I'll let you explain this because it is directly related to what we just passed, it's just saying we'll pay it.
One is an initial, initial resolution and the other is the actual resolution. I do not know why the TCA requires two resolutions to say the exact same thing, but the initial resolutions give us the authority to do what we're doing in a second resolution. Cory may be able to tell us better on that, but I just know every time we do a borrowing, you will always see two resolutions.
There's a time period that we have to wait.
Twenty days. So to, tomorrow, today, when you all approve this, we'll have an, another, uh, notice go out in the newspaper this week. Um, and then twenty days starts and after twenty days, we should be able to have the closing and pay for the truck.
The only difference in D and E is, I guess, have to authorize the levy of taxes to pay for it, that's all.
That's what I would say, and all we're doing now is saying we're gonna pay for it. We've already proved it, it's downtown, we're gonna pay for it.
If it says general obligation, that's already kinda in the language. So that whenever you say general obligation, you're obligating your taxes. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for shipper or Cory? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion for resolution twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-nine as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries, resolution twenty-twenty-four dash thirty, the resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant to apply for a Tennessee Department of Transportation alternative grants, funds for twenty-twenty-five. Cory?
Mayor, commissioners, we talked about this.
Thought you said you know.
This, this is for us to apply only for the next phase of the downtown project. One thing that we realized in talking to the engineers and, um, project head is that it's probably a five-to-eight-year timeline. So instead of doing one phase, we asked if we could do, continue down to bond, back to glass and up. Also, add another phase from, uh, the red light down to General Sessions Courthouse. One thing that does from our perspective, it gives us from a five-to-eight, eight-year, uh, timeframe, gives us time to, uh, plan for the funding, the twenty percent match, the eighty percent grant. Uh, again, you're just applying, it takes seven, eight months for that award. Yes, sir.
What about, you know, when I talk from, I guess, the post office down to First Avenue? Wasn't that part of, uh?
It would be phase three.
But I mean, I'm, I know that, but wasn't that gonna be part of phase one or two, then we took phase two and put it into one?
But phase two is always this glass street, bond street, it was not going towards, uh, First Avenue.
First Avenue.
I mean, eventually we want to continue the phases.
Okay.
Over and over again.
Superior press request that it's in the master plan, it's been updated, but it goes back to twenty-sixteen. Um, it does show going to First Avenue on that master plan, so it could be a phase. Of course, you guys have the ability to stop the phases anytime, but, um, the master plan does show it going all the way to First Avenue.
Because that's the way historical board took it.
Okay.
So when does our twenty percent come into play?
Like what we're at now with the current phase?
No, I'm talking about with this in here we're applying for.
Not till you begin.
Not till, five to eight years.
Yeah.
Not till you begin.
Right.
Sure.
So it gives us the time to plan and know and looking at forecasted revenues and coming in to really plan this phase without.
Sure.
Hopefully not having to borrow any money.
Manage your budget. Any other questions?
I'm still, I guess, concerned a little bit about downtown.
No change orders this month?
Well, I mean, that's good, but when the street, um, the telephone poles and all that's coming down, correct?
Yes.
When will that take place?
The power company, Mike, if I'm right, they're supposed to be here by December, correct? The poles?
You talking about the fridge or downtown?
No, downtown.
Downtown.
That you call, Mike, I'm talking about.
Wrong Mike, wrong Mike.
Aren't they supposed to be delivered by December?
The new poles?
Yes.
I don't know if the old poles are coming out, we don't know what that is on this.
We don't, so Mount Pleasant Park, they owns the.
Poles are up there, one, they TNT.
Yep, so we don't have a clue, we don't know when they would come down.
It, and I can tell you this, having attended the Thursday work sessions that the contractor has, I got fair warning from Lawrenceburg and from Columbia, Tennessee, from both of their mayors, that the one person that you needed sitting at the table was AT&amp;T and when we had the initial kickoff, AT&amp;T was sitting here. And that's all this company does is do this type work, so apparently they got a great relationship with AT&amp;T and both of those communities told me the only holdup they had with the whole project was AT&amp;T.
I know Mount Pleasant Park system had to put up a pole out on North Main Street and AT&amp;T, I guess, whoever, still hadn't put up there. And you go out Bear Creek Park.
That ain't Mount Pleasant.
I don't care, Bill.
I do.
I'm just saying it's AT&amp;T. Like me and you can sit here and argue, but I'm not gonna argue with you. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we just can't depend on AT&amp;T is what I'm saying. Anyway, let's move on.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve resolution, resolution twenty-twenty-four dash thirty as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Pass.
Three to two. Resolution twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-one, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant to participate in publicly, in public entity partners, safety partner matching grant program. Cory or Phillip, I don't know which one.
Sorry.
So this, uh, resolution, uh, we apply every year, um, this one is for boots, for utility. It's up to two thousand dollars and public entity parcel match up to that. So I know, um, we used it last year for the same thing and, uh, utility workers and guys, appreciate that.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the resolution twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-one as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-twenty-four dash thirty-two, a resolution to the city of Mount Pleasant to authorize the city enter into a professional service agreement with KCI Technologies to complete a comprehensive survey of the city's pavement systems.
Um, the purpose of this resolution is to authorize the city to enter into a professional service agreement with KCI to conduct a comprehensive survey of the city's pavement system. Will Hager gave a presentation on this at the study session. KCI will provide a conditions assessment of the existing sidewalks and streets and provide you data and information to help you determine which streets and sidewalks to improve. Um, the total cost of the professional service is, is sixteen, hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-one-hundred dollars. This does not include the actual improvements to any streets or sidewalks, it's just the survey. Um, the proposal and contract is attached as an exhibit to the resolution.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that, um.
Mike started, uh, I answered him.
Oh, sorry.
I cheated over here, I'm, I'm okay.
I just think it's really important that we have a plan and it's done by kind of in line with the other thing I was talking about. This company will come in and without prejudice, say these are the streets that need the most work now so that nobody's making a decision based on any family on that street or there's no way for anybody to accuse us of that because it will be a very orderly fashion, it will be by a non-biased party so that we make sure that we're getting to all the streets, sidewalks and things that need to be done. And, um, I just think it's a really great plan to have and also, you know, as we're going forward in the future, we already have that roadmap. So as people on this board change, staff people change, that would be the roadmap that would still be there to continue. So as people on this board change, staff, people change, that would be the roadmap that would still be there to continue on. So I think it's a really important thing for us, our community to know that we're not making decisions based on our own priorities. That's why I have.
I'm not saying, you know, this is not a bad point because we definitely need a street state. But I'm gonna go back several years and, and I hope nobody takes this wrong. But our former mayor, Jim Bailey, walked every street. And he came back and presented us something on the sidewalks. We haven't touched a name since he's, since he's done it and he done it for real charge. And, and I don't know if this here is gonna be the same way.
Phillip, people.
And I, and I'm still talking to him. And on the paving, I mean, they might set a quote and it still may be a few years down the road before we do those streets. So then those streets that they say may cost let's just say five hundred thousand. But when we get ready to pave them, they may be a million dollars. I don't know. And I just don't, I just don't wanna waste money, you know, and not doing something is what I'm saying.
What would you like to answer that?
But I do appreciate, you know, what, what you're doing, Phillip.
So without a doubt, that's a hard decision to make to spend a hundred thousand dollars on paper. I do think it's a little different because we're talking about empirical data uh, through professional services. And it's a, like I said, a roadmap for not only us, if we're here, if we're not here, if you guys are not here, to actually follow. They will rank our streets from worst or from best to worst or worst to best, it folds out. But what it does is give us a tool to look at and go, when we look at capital projects. For example, if you have a street that we know is a five, ten million dollar project, we may have to skip it. But we maybe it'll jump down there and get seven or eight streets for what the funding mix is over that time. I think it would make our job a lot easier. I think it'll make the next elected body that comes in easier. Um, and I think it's a good thing, but I understand that's a hard decision to make to spend a hundred thousand dollars on white paper. So um, to you guys, either way, we're not, we're not, we're gonna start planning, we're already planning. We're hitting the ground running because that is a priority for you guys if the pay street is.
All right, Shipper, apparently you won't say something.
I do, but Ms. Granbury, you had her hand up just once.
My thing is, first of all, we have a consulting firm already. And second of all, when local street caved in down there, like the sidewalk, we immediately got engineered down there and we fixed it. Merchant streets been caved in for I don't know how long, some child's gonna get hurt on it. And city gonna get sued before we decide to do something about it. So I don't see what's gonna make a difference.
I just wanted to add, as part of the inter fund loan that the, that we did when I first was hired, because that was something that the city had been pursuing for a while and they wanted to borrow funds from the gas fund to get started on some of these capital projects because of all the pilots and tips that we have built into the revenue for the general fund. So our general fund property taxes is one hundred percent what pays for roads. Our general fund is very small. We also provide all the police and fire protection through that fund as well. Nonprofits all come out of that fund as well. So being limited on, we collected before I started here, the city's property taxes are about two million dollars a year. If you think about it, we have been functioning on about two hundred, two million dollars. It could be a little bit more than that with other taxes included, but our main source of revenue in there is two million dollars. That's what you have to provide police, fire and roads to the whole city. Include salaries, insurances, capital projects, whatever we do, that is our main source of revenue. As these tiffs are coming off, as these pilot agreements that we did with all this industry that Mount Pleasant has brought in in the last five years, what I want, I think, and I'm, I'm saying this not necessarily for the commissioners, but the citizens to understand too. All this industry we see, we have not recouped the cost, we have not recouped the property taxes on any of these industries yet. Landmark is our first one that's supposed to come off next year. Now landmark has been here, I don't know how long. Eight years?
Eight, nine.
Nine, okay. So that's the first one we're gonna start seeing and that's where this plan is headed. Our goal is not to use our current property taxes towards any of this. The inter fund loan that we did through gas, we told the comptroller's office, we are going to do streets with it. We have already told the comptroller's office what we were gonna do with half a million that we borrowed from gas fund. Every year I have to make a payment back to gas fund to keep us in compliance with what we told the comptroller's office we were doing. Part of it was parks and we have done our park stuff and we're finishing up arrow mines. That was one of the last things. Gardenia Park was another one. The remaining funds have to be used towards streets. A hundred and sixteen of it will go through our, towards KCI. And whatever we have remaining, like Ms. Granbury you brought up, Phillip's actually already working on other things that we have not brought to you all yet because it's not finalized to fix some of those problems. So we don't get in those situations that we have in the past. But the project with KCI, none of these streets are gonna be fixed for twenty-five thousand dollars, which is our purchasing threshold for bids, which means every time we bid one of these streets out, you all will have it as part of your agenda to know what's going on. So again, good, better, best, whichever street we are told by the engineers. Of course, we are gonna go by the engineers telling us you need to pay attention to this one. Others, depending on what funding we have available, the property taxes that we are gonna get back from these industries is what we'll use towards funding this plan. And that's, since this plan is gonna probably take most of this fiscal year, goal is for next fiscal year, like Phillip said earlier, July, July's budget is going to be very uh, street oriented. Sure.
But that's, you know, when we go back talking about the streets and gray, this others gonna end up the same way. We all sat here and voted to do gray line. And then we turned around and we know, so it's been, it's been pushed to us.
I can only speak for what I've been handed um, in the last year and a half. And of course Phillip's on board and Kate's been pushing all the industry we have and the grants we have. We have tried the best that we could with what we had available. And like I stated, if you look at our general fund and if you look at cost of doing one street, our general fund now is about six million dollars.
Shipper, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not disagreeing.
I know you're not.
I'm just saying we borrowed money from the gas company to do gray line. And, and we, we have pushed it aside.
I just.
We decided we wouldn't do it.
When I presented the plan, um, the document that I sent to the comptroller's office that was approved in this meeting is what I used. We did not specify any names of streets at that point in that plan. We said we were doing paving and streets with that. There was no words. And I can go back to the agenda and we can look at that document, but that same document that was signed here is what went to this comptroller's office.
Kate, quote me if I'm wrong. But the, one of the main reasons we didn't do it is because uh, construction was going on at the middle street.
Where, I'm sorry.
At the middle street, correct?
Where?
Gray lane, did not do gray lane because of construction.
Because of the, the buildings that they're putting up, yeah. And then the cost.
And their, what?
But what, what is in front of you though, is gonna give you a roadmap with costs. The difference with what Mr. Bailey did years ago on sidewalks and didn't have any costs associated with it at all. And you, you can't start deciding where you're gonna pave until you determine the costs. And, and the expert tells you, this is the worst you have. And these are the best, these can win a lot. Um, none of us have the ability to do that because it's not our area of expertise and that's what you're getting. Getting a roadmap where you can plan for the future.
Sure.
I'm just saying we pushed, we pushed the street aside.
And then, and that's what we're trying to get away from is all I'm saying is next year we should have money in our budget to do streets like we do, what we plan to do. This was our plan last year when I borrowed the money from the general fund. Around this time last year, I was borrowing the half a million from the gas fund and that was the guidance. And it is doing a street plan and start paving roads. So here we are a year later, following through with the plan, so.
Correct. Any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
No.
Three to two. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, a resolution to accept the ownership and maintenance of a sewer line improvements located at fourteen twenty-seven North Main Street. For everybody's reference, that is Landmark Kyle.
So um, when Landmark originally came here, they were required to build a sewer line that would go to their property. When they did their expansion, they covered up that sewer line. And no longer needed it, but it was part of the city's initial negotiation to have sewer line along the front so that we could connect to it one day. So they have built a new sewer line. And, and this purpose of this resolution is for you all to accept ownership of that sewer line. We have the as-built drawings of the sewer line, we have a two deck approval, the sewer line, uh, we have a bond in place. So you would be accepting ownership and then the maintenance subject to the bond. Um, I think the bond is two years.
Uh, yes.
Two years.
They, they, and Landmark fully paid for the entire sewer line if they didn't have paper in it.
That's right. Not a penny. Any comments or questions on that one? Not entertain a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion in favor of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Corey tax write-off and against of the commission, I'd like to, like the way they did it this time, there's no names. Any comments, questions on it, Corey, or comments you'd like to make?
I do not. Shipper, did you have anything on this one?
No, I think um, this is not, since these are usually a confidential copy, they are not attached to the public agenda. But I do believe that Teresa put copies of them in uh, maybe she didn't, did she?
Yeah.
You know, Ms. Granbury has her, so I think paper copies were somewhere then.
They're in our package.
There should have been in there all packets. Either way, every tenth year has to be written off. So we just, twenty twenty-three just finished, so twenty thirteen is the packet that is in your packet to be written off. It's five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars for TCA, we cannot collect after ten years. These are already taxes that were turned over to clerk and master years ago. So you usually now see me bring right, tax write-off twice a year. Once a year is in the spring when we turn it over to the clerk and master. And then when I close the books, I have to write off the tenth year, so.
And fun fact, I think two thousand thirteen was the first year that Mount Pleasant filed a delinquent tax lawsuit. And it might have come.
A full circle.
A little circle finally.
Good deal.
All right, do we need a motion or anything on that, Corey?
Yeah.
Okay, entertain a motion that we reviewed the tax write-off for twenty thirteen.
I make a motion that we review the tax write-off for twenty thirteen.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Request for quote twenty twenty-four IPG planning grant, zone meters and sewer flow.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a request for qualifications. Uh, this is the uh, planning grant we received. Um, round about two hundred thousand is dedicated to sewer. And it's for the uh, water model for back then capital projects. The other uh, two hundred thousand is for water. And that's gonna be zone meters. Um, I get back to talking about the telemetry in my office again, actually bringing it in even more and looking at zones, it'll be eight zone meters. You can tell I'm kind of excited about utility and water for some reason. But with that being said, we're proposing that barge um, through evaluation, accept that or have that for the uh, wastewater and sewer and then CEC uh, for the water.
Okay. Any questions for Phillip? You can now entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept um, RFQ twenty twenty-four for the IPG planning grant.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries STDBG allocate twenty twenty-four funds. Phillip, Shipper?
Um, we allocate these funds, I think this is gonna be our third or fourth year we're getting it. Um, after we pass five thousand in population, the state gives you a block grant. It can only be used for certain types of projects that relate to federal and state roads. So it's not funding that we can allocate towards our local streets, like the ones we have issues on. Those have to be done through property taxes. So STPG, STBG funds, we're gonna allocate, we're requesting that they are allocated towards a downtown project like we have in the past to finish out the rest of this project. If there is any remaining funds at the end of it, we would have to bring it back to you all. But like I said, we can only use it for things that are on state routes. So that kind of limits us on using it towards um, our internal streets. Mr. Davis had the question.
So our uh, sidewalks could be used for that since they?
I would have to get with the grant consultant on, they've been very specific on what I can use them for. Right now, we're using the funding we received in twenty twenty-three has been appropriated towards um, lights and traffic mobilization um, for this project. Um, because that's such a big item in the grant, we're able to ma, use some of this as our matching amount.
Good question though, we should.
It's, it's very um, I don't think sidewalks, I, because I looked at a lot of different avenues before I asked for this to be allocated towards downtown. And they limit us so much because it has to be on state routes. Well, the state route's already been paved by, you know, it's already part of this project, so. But it will help us with the traffic control lights, so that's something that we can match this with.
That's very good.
I know what the traffic lights cost and ain't gonna get in my way.
No, I think that's right, we might pay for half a mile.
No, I don't think it would either. Any questions? Entertain a motion to do, apply for the STDBG allocated funds.
I make a motion that we apply for the STDBG allocated two thousand twenty-four funds.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Comments from citizens, Barbara Richardson at two oh seven Columbia Avenue, if you would please come forward and state your name and your address again, please, man.
My name is Barbara Richardson and my address is two oh seven Columbia Avenue. I was up here on um, with concerns about uh, the water bill and uh, the utility bills. Uh, I have the property and I was thinking about putting units on that property. And I know that there's a process of doing that with permits and everything. But over the years, the utility bills have been so expensive. And I don't wanna put property, uh, put units up. And um, the tenants can't afford to, you know, make the payments. I just want to know why the utilities are so expensive here in Mount Pleasant and they're not that expensive in Columbia.
I mean, I can.
Corey?
Sorry, so I didn't give the speech tonight, but this, the citizen comment at time is supposed to be a time for you to address the commission and just say what your concerns are. It's not supposed to be a time for them to interact back with you.
Okay.
Um, so I think you've done a good job of stating your concerns and you may, may be able to talk to one of them after the meeting sort of.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much. That was the only one we had sign up, board, staff, any comments, any others?
I still have the question of what is in the building on Boswell, since there are trucks and people working in them and there's been nothing approached to go down there. I'd like to have enough.
So uh, one of the updates I did send, the attachment from planning director, Mr. Brooks. I don't remember what was in it, but um, I did send that.
Chris, any?
Owner of that property pulled, did pull permit for basically new roof, renovate the office building. And he put exterior siding on the existing warehouse. He replaced the old metal. That's just um, seething, um, it's not upside, it's not structural. So he's able to do that. Interior, what he's gonna do, I understand he's gonna lease part of the property, part of the space out for individuals to come in and store stuff or maybe have a business, cleaning business, maybe is what I heard.
Yeah, one of them is a cleaning business, one of them is a trucking business. And the thing of it is, um, he did reconstruct, so the parking lot should have been paved. And the next thing of it is, the citizens should have been aware that something was going in there, like we are in all the other communities. We always put up a sign saying public hearing, so they can come in and state their opinion on what is going in. And now you got stuff coming in and out of there, you ain't got decent lighting down there, you got kids down there. And the people down there don't even know what in the heck is going on.
Wonder where are that policy?
I'm not either.
The policy that we don't have to pay, oh, I will bring it to you because we rejected the call, Brooke.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a second? All those in favor, aye?